We'll do is have roll call. I'll call your name, please introduce yourself and your function on the board. Lori.
Lori Beetz, parent representative.
Kate.
Kate is the parent rep.
Cindy.
Cindy Watola, parent rep.
Sarah.
Sarah Oketso, parent rep.
Kirsten.
Kirsten.
Oh, we couldn't hear you, Kirsten.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh oh, yeah, oh, okay, Kirsten Clay.
There's a delay, I think that that's what the issue is. There's a delay between when we can hear you and when your lips are moving, one, two, three, four, five. I am Tina Holder King, parent rep and chair. And so we will, oh, I'm sorry. Hall, are you able to chime in? Um, actually, I think he may be gone.
Do we have quorum without him?
Yes, as long as we have six, we're fine. Okay, I think we lost Nick. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Sarah, second?
I second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote on the agenda to be approved as it was provided. All in favor, please raise your hand. Sarah, for some reason, I can't. There you go, okay, thanks. It is unanimous, the agenda is approved. The next item we will go to on the agenda is a principal selection process update. Just want to give our community a little bit more detail in addition to what was sent out Sunday. As announced, there are candidate forums coming up next week. And so information will be sent out regarding those with this weekend's communication. But did want to talk to the council and the forum working group about some details. Some information was provided earlier today by Sarah and Emily. Thank you guys for that. And just wanted to open the floor for some questions around that or any, well, I guess first, any additional information that, Sarah, you'd like to supplement before we talk about it?
So just thank you all for feedback provided for and around the candidate forums. I just appreciate the ways that we've leaned in for this. Just as an overview, the candidate forums, their proposed structure for them is kind of, is going to be town hall style. Before they begin, there'll be an opportunity for each audience, students, teachers, staff, family communities to share questions. There will be a moderator. Those questions can be sent in advance or they could be asked the day of. The moderator will support of the LSC will organize those questions and ask them during the actual candidate forum. There'll be an opportunity for teachers, students, and family community members to share a little bit with the candidate about who we are as a school. And then we'll ask the candidates to share from that particular perspective. So for the teacher forum, teachers will share about their feeling, you know, their perspective of the school and then the candidate will introduce themselves and then we'll go into question and answer and conclude them there. So that's kind of the general structure for the forums. And once again, just thank everyone for helping to kind of think through that suggested structure. It's open to discussion by far. Some information has been shared, as you mentioned, Tina, earlier in the, in, with LSC members, which is basically just kind of tools and resources that can be used for the forums. So just wanted to let folks know that the work is underway. And the first forum kicks off on Monday and it's with our teachers and staff.
Can I ask a question? Would it be possible? Sorry, it's, Sarah? Every time I talk, it's a different. Somebody else.
You're breaking up me and Kate.
Okay, one second. Just come back to me, one sec.
Let me ask a question, Sarah, actually a couple of questions. So is the plan for the candidates to eat, all answer the same questions or has that been decided yet?
Did also include in the, in the folders, kind of the guidance of the tip sheet from CPS. It doesn't necessarily say that all the questions have to be the same for each candidate. So I mean, we can just, we can further discuss that and explore that. But once again, I didn't necessarily see that in the guidance, that tip sheet number nine, which is included in those folders. But once again, we can further explore that and discuss it.
Yeah, I didn't see any guidance on it either. I was just curious if, you know, what the format would be, if they would be afforded the opportunity to answer the same question, which, I mean, in theory, that sounds great, but when you think through it, it's like, okay, then who gets to go first? And it's kind of, I guess, and some of it would depend on the question too. My other question is, oh, sorry, Nick is just chiming in, so he keeps getting kicked off his connection, so he's not going to be able to join us.
Tina, can I ask a question real quick? Do you need me to be recording this?
Oof, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Thank you, thank you so much. And another question I had, I know there was one request forwarded about the student forum, about having that later in the day, so camp kids won't miss out. So, but I noticed it was like in the afternoon.
That can, it can, wait, that's very much open. We can change, nothing said in stone. I think those timeframes are just there, we can certainly discuss it, you know, as a board and discuss the best time really could have had. Folks said this valley here and you've got some feedback there as well. But yeah, that's definitely open for discussion. I just, it was just a placeholder. I know that in the, in one of the candidate conversations, there was this, there was this potential scheduling conflict and with regards to her availability. And, and her ideal date timeframe would be one, anytime before one. But, you know, we can, we can work with them and see what's possible with students as well. So I think that's very much, you know, open for discussion. And just to get back to your original question, Tina, in terms of like how the questions were, you know, when I think about that town hall forum, I think about the town hall forums that we see and kind of during debate time with elections and things like that. And, you know, when I think about it, I see kind of candidates kind of take turns to get to answer the question first or not. Then, you know, they do, some of them have questions that are for both and some of them have questions that are just specifically to them. So just wanted to share that inside as well.
So I was just kind of thinking about the forum of, the format of it, because I think if you have people submit questions in advance, it sometimes helps us kind of start off, get to the meat of things, make sure that we have questions that are kind of getting to people's main personalities, main backgrounds that we want to highlight, to highlight kind of differences or kind of different skillsets that they bring. You can kind of help bring out some of the things that we've learned in all of these interviews with them that we think are going to be most important in making this decision. But then I was thinking, could we possibly have a chat that is only with the moderator? And if people submit questions, then we could additionally, because sometimes there's things that come up based on what someone said or, you know, other things that come up that you could submit your question to the moderator. And if it's not a repeat question or it's not something that's deemed inappropriate or something like that, then we would call on that person to ask their question. But I think a chat function, I don't really want, and I don't want that up there. But if you could set it up that the chat goes directly to the moderator and then the moderator kind of brings all those questions in, I think that would be helpful. But I don't really want the free for all of anybody gets up and says anything. And if it's, sometimes people get up and ask a question that literally is just the question that was asked. And we want to make sure that this keeps moving forward and we continue to get good information. So I don't know, I just didn't know what people thought about that.
I wanted to feed off that. First, I just wanted to say, I'm surprised that it feels like it's being set up as a debate with both of them on at the same time, which seems really awkward to me. It seems like it should be a half hour for the first one, a half hour for the second one. Because I, I mean, no one wants to debate and I think that would also just feel like, haha, you're, you're in a competition, which you are, but not so much like that. And then when it comes to what Kate is saying, you know, we talked about this a little bit after those of us who, who did the, one of the interviews, was how do we, we don't want to gatekeep people's questions because we want to make sure everybody can be heard. But we do also want to moderate them because it may be five people all have the same question and we can put it into one condensed forum and have someone read it. And maybe there's a space for somewhat, for when you submit your question, do you want to ask your question on the forum? Or would you like someone else to ask the question for you? Because there may be people who are just uncomfortable or who knows, they might be listening in at work and they can't go on camera. So making it accessible as much as possible while also being moderated and controlled, so it doesn't become a free for all.
Yeah, I have heard some other forums that have happened that felt real uncomfortable because it was like, we're going to ask you the question, then we're going to ask, and you can hear everything the other person just said, and then we're going to ask you the same question. So you can't really give your best response because you're trying to sound original and not repeat something that may be obviously the right answer. So I, I've heard of it just being like real weird and like watching the other person's face as you're asking the same, like it's, I don't know, I think it can get real weird if it's set up more like a debate.
And then one person has.
Right, I do like a half an hour and a half an hour, but then who decide who goes first? Are there a lot of people who will check out every half hour and they'll miss most of it? Do you do 15 minutes and 15 minutes and go back and forth so everybody has some time? I don't know.
It, it's hard, it's, I don't think we're going to get everybody. And I hope that if someone's excited about the process, that an hour is doable. But also if it's, if they're going head to head, then it's, okay, this person had five extra minutes to come up with their answer.
Yeah.
So really, I think that it's a half and half situation. That would be my suggestion is that we do whatever time, six to 6:30, 6:30 to seven, and then have space for both.
Yeah, and maybe limit the questions, like frame it so, because a half an hour of being questioned is a long time on the hot seat. So maybe it's 20 minutes of questions and then 10 minutes of Q and A, kind of a wrap up. And then go to the next person. Because, yeah, I just think 30 minutes is pretty intense.
At the same time, I just listened to all of your interviews with everybody and those were long. So like 30 minutes is not going to be much time to cover much ground with either of the, I mean, I know they'll be separated and it'll be 30 minutes for teachers and 30 minutes. But still, like, you guys have talked a long time.
We would have gone on, I mean, I know in my second one with the excitement of being in the same room with somebody and being in the room for the first time with some of my fellow LSC members and staff, it, we really could have gone on for a very long time. And I feel like hopefully there will be confidence that, I will tell you, this LS, for, you know, the LSC has put in so much time and work on this and it's exciting and I'm actually, I'm really proud to be a part of it. And I'm proud of the work that people are doing, especially the people like Sarah's doing so much and Tina and everybody and Nick, all of you. But we've done a really good job of vetting candidates. And we've put a lot of time into meeting with them and coming up with questions and making sure it's legal and fair and all encompassing. So I'm hoping that people can have faith that this LSC has done their due diligence. This is a forum for everybody to get a chance for the last candidates, however many that we decide tonight. And that it's not going to be all, it's not a full interview process. We're not giving everybody two hours with each candidate.
Yeah, I think you raised a good point, Lori. I mean, in a perfect situation, it'd be great to have, make sure everyone gets their question asked and give choices of, okay, you want to ask your question or someone else. But if we are going to try to control questions so that there's not duplicates, then it's probably just going to have the moderator do them so they can always be grouped accordingly. Actually, one of our parents just chimed in that if we use Zoom, that there can be a private moderator chat. So thank you, I don't know if this was, yeah, this was Kim. So thanks, Kimberly Beck, for that little tip, I appreciate it. What else? So we've thrown some things out and this is, this is not something we necessarily need to vote on. But I think we need to kind of come to consensus so that the forum committee can move forward. And we need to come to consensus on, you know, what the structure of the, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, what the structure of, I sound really quiet, what the structure of the, of the forums are going to be, is, is there anyone that has strong objection to anything? I, I have strong objection to the debate style, like, hey, you answered this question now, you answered the same question. I think we should avoid that. But other than that, I think we, I think we can manage the time so that it comes out evenly. I don't, I don't know that it has to be down to the second. But I think if we decide to go that way, where there's, you know, X number, X amount of time for this candidate, X amount of time for this candidate and so forth, that we can manage that in a, in a close or spot on fair way. What are other people's thoughts?
I, I agree. I love it and I really appreciate that parent suggestion. We can do Zoom as well, I have Zoom.
Yeah.
I don't know who has access to Zoom. I love.
And I don't mean to, like, this is, it is a forum to get input, to get everyone to see who these last two, I assume, two candidates will be, get people to know them, get more feedback for the LSC. But it's not an election. It is going to be us taking all that feedback and coming back and making a decision. And I feel like when we decide on the last two candidates, there's going to be, no matter who of the three we pick, they're going to have the very different people with very different skillsets, with very different experience levels in different areas. And I do think some of the things that we're going to be deciding on as an LSC, us leading some of the group, leading some of the questions to show that, to kind of help people understand kind of these, like, I, I wouldn't want it to come out, like, if some person spent a lot of time in high school and some person has had ton of early childhood education, that's something we're going to be weighing about how we choose who the next principal is going to be. And so I wouldn't want to somehow get through all the questions and people not know that. So I do think having some of the forum questions to kind of bring out some of the key parts of who these people are and what their experiences are, is not a bad thing. And I don't, I don't know how people think about that or is that wrong? And we really just go with what other, other questions the community has? I just feel like we have a ton of information about these people that we need to get a good amount of it out in the forum and have them have the ability to present like the, the big parts of them. And so I think that's going to be hard in a 30 minute chunk unless that we make sure that some of the questions will reveal a lot of that.
So one of the things I'll just add, I'll just add this, one of the things that is actually in the tip sheet is that have the candidates present. And I've, from, I've also experienced is how the candidates present like a one pager or, you know, front back. And then that could be a way as well to have them speak to what you just said, Kate. So the candidates, we could give them a template or we could just say, hey, could you put together a one, a one pager that is, you know, audience friendly? But then, yeah, I mean, we could even, like you said, Kate, think about questions to ask that are not necessarily those questions. You know, making sure the questions are, are comprehensive enough that it does provide that full perspective.
I think maybe one or two sort of guiding questions, but this is really a forum in its true sense. And so to have faith and trust in the community and the people that are tuning in to just have their voice and ask the question that they want to ask and just let that kind of happen.
You know, I'm inclined to, excuse me, just for a second, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with you there, Cindy, because I feel like throughout this whole process, this council has vetted these candidates and their qualifications to be our school leader, a lot based on the feedback we've already received from the community, based on the feedback we've received from the teachers and, and some students. So I think that regardless of their experience in CPS, down, down to the detail, they've landed here in this process. And so I really want to focus on community voice as far as what they specifically want to know from the candidates. Not so much above me, if there is something they want to know about the candidates, of course, I want them to ask that question. But I don't, I feel like we should, oh, we shouldn't worry about necessarily getting that out there. I think the one pager is, is a great idea, giving them a chance to introduce themselves. And also it will tell the community too what, I think what's closest to their heart. I think when you present yourself, you present the things that are most important to you in whatever situation you're in. So I think that'll be a spontaneous opportunity for the candidates to present them best, their best selves. I'm really inclined to really stick to what our community wants to hear.
So then, would you, so I, I'm asking.
Just another thing, sorry, Kate, do we also want the candidates to like have five minutes of the floor to have them share a little bit about them, you know, provide a quick overview to, before we go into the Q and A? Because that could also get to the concern, yeah.
Yeah, I would love to, I mean, in my, my world, I would love the idea of, I want to see how they, how do they lead a group? How, what is their persona when they're, when they're in front of? I mean, ideally it would be in an auditorium with passing microphones, but how are they going to present themselves to all of us? What is that personality and that leadership going to feel like in those moments? And how do they handle questions from parents and staff and from kids? What is that like? And so I feel like with that time, that they should have some freedom, because that's what I want to see.
I am completely fine with that. I am just really worried about 30 minutes ending up being like a five minute introduction and like six or seven questions. And if it's too, it, I am worried about not getting that much information besides how they interact with a group with seven questions that are kind of more at random or, you know, and, and that's fine. It's just I want to, I want people walking away feeling like they got a really good, good feel for the person. And I think not any seven questions will do that, I guess, is kind of where I was going with that. So I think just kind of trying to, thinking about how few questions will probably make it through, trying to structure how we do that. And if it's people who submit or it's people who send the chat, the Zoom function, but I mean, we could have hundreds of questions submitted, right? And so how we do that with like 25 minutes of their time is kind of how I'm trying to think about it. And how do you decide what gets asked and what doesn't and that kind of thing? Because, yeah.
Well, hello, Mr. Gray. How are you? Mr. Gray, can you hear me?
You don't want it?
Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Gray.
Good afternoon, everyone.
There we go. Good afternoon.
I see you saying something, but I can't hear anything.
Okay, so, let's see. Forum committee, I think, I think Sarah, I think you pretty much are the committee, right? Except for the, no, Cindy, you're doing the student forum, correct?
Yeah, I am. When I signed up for that, I didn't know the schedule and I'm going to be in Wisconsin. But it doesn't mean that I can't tune in, but I am wondering when I'm going to have the privilege of speaking to the students. I don't know how to connect myself with them.
Okay.
Is there a teacher on that, with me, paired with me on that?
I believe, I want to say Emily, I don't have the sheet in front of me. Do you have access to the drive, Sarah, by any chance? I think it may be Emily, but I'm not 100% sure about that. But, you know, I'll follow up with you offline and we'll figure something out, okay?
I do have wifi where I'm going, so.
Okay, okay. So making these, these final structure decisions, Sarah, how, how would you like to proceed? I mean, I have, I, I have, I think we've talked about what we don't want. And I think there's enough there to kind of nuance the best way to structure. Nothing's perfect, you know, we understand that, nothing's perfect. And then, of course, the decisions we make tonight will impact how time rolls out. So I'm, I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I can just recap what I heard, just to make sure we're all kind of on the same page about what the forum looks like. And what I heard was that we want to be able to have each candidate, you know, speak and answer questions two separate times or three separate times, or that's when, you know, we wanted that to be separate. I also heard that we want to have a moderator and we want to have a moderator that has their own unique chat so they can kind of, kind of go through those questions if they come in, that may come in that are not submitted in advance time. I also heard that it's okay to have candidates kind of intro themselves for a little minute, a moment, and then kind of move into that space. Anything else I'm, I'm missing about what I, what was shared? Oh, and then asking, asking if the individual wants to ask the question themselves or if they want the moderator to read that question. And we can certainly add that in the, in the Google forum. So we could say, what's your question, like name, you know, teacher, student, parent, community rep, a community member? And then, do you want to ask the question yourself? We could add that to the Google forum, so we can, so that's what I.
You know, the only thing about providing that is when we have questions that are similar. Like say there are five questions and that are maybe not just exactly the same, but kind of all in the same general group. But then one person wants to ask the question themselves, you know, do we take up the time to ask two questions? Or do we just let whoever is moderating ask the questions?
I think we want to, one, identify who the moderators will be. Or we could tag two moderation. And then part of the role of those moderators would be to kind of go through those questions and then also land the chat and make sure it's a safe space.
The other question I have is if we are acknowledging that there is no way we're going to be able to ask all the questions that people are submitting, do we try to group some of those questions and give the, the candidates an opportunity to reply in email form or like respond to other questions that were asked that we didn't get to? Because there is me, a lot of people who submit questions that their questions, we're not going to have time to get to in the 25 minutes. Or is that too much to ask?
I think it's, I would say it's too much because our turnaround time from these three things is so quick. And I, and I, again, I would just hope that, you know, for the people who are listening, that people have faith that we are going to get to as much of it as we can, that we have done so much already and we really want to get as much feedback as possible. But it is not a third interview in a lot of ways. We're not going to be able to 100% answer everybody's questions and thoughts. But I feel like we did the surveys ahead of time, we've asked people what we were looking for and hopefully we'll have faith in that.
And you know, I think we, perhaps when the communication goes out Sunday in the signup forms, that we let people know that the questions will be asked in the order they're received. So perhaps that will get people, I mean, not asked, but will be included. So perhaps that will get people, I mean, not asked, but will be included in the order that they're received. So if we, I mean, you guys are confused, you know what I mean? So let's say we get 100 questions and we don't have time to get to them all. I mean, we work our way through the list. I mean, how could we order them otherwise? There has to be some kind of rhyme and reason to the ordering.
But that's, that's kind of what I was getting at the beginning, like trying to group some of them together to.
Oh, yeah, we definitely do that.
Well, I know, but I just also think that, I don't know. That's what I'm worried about is that we'll get, if we do it in the order that they were received, we're going to have questions that don't logically, you know what I mean? Like that people will be going backward and it's not the best use, I don't know.
No, I mean, so let's say we get 100 questions. I think the moderator will be responsible for grouping the questions, I mean, regardless of what order they came in. So yeah, so I'm still saying put similar questions together. If there's, if there are four questions that have to do with restorative practice or whatever the term is, then group those, whether it's question number two, 27, and 40. But then from there, once we have all that grouping done, then, you know, and we just keep working our way down to down the list as far as creating the groupings, as far as asking questions. I mean, I, I hope that our community's interest is such that we get overwhelmed with questions. That would be great.
I mean, but the other thing about it is we could have people submit questions and questions that are similar or that seem to be a lot of people that had that question kind of get grouped and the ones that have the most interest in that question would go to the top. You know what I mean? Like if there's a ton of restorative justice questions, if there's a ton of reading curriculum questions, like those kinds of things as opposed to, I just feel like making sure people know that we couldn't possibly ask every question and we're going to do our best to get the main questions and concerns that are submitted to the forum asked.
Yeah, I agree. And I, and I have, I have confidence that whoever is doing, will do it, understands that. I mean, for sure, you know, because that is the intent. So I think that that will be the case. Because of course we want to hit those things that our community, and so that's, that's what we're going to do. Mr. Gray, did you have your hand raised?
I did.
How are you?
So you guys are, is in advance of the forum, correct?
I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little bit.
You will have these questions submitted in advance of the forum, correct?
I believe that is the case. Is that, is that the case, Sarah? Okay, yeah.
So if you already have the questions prior to the forum, then you can go through them all, prioritize which questions you feel are going to be good questions for the candidates. You can also group ones that are similar and ask that as one question. It does not necessarily identify who asked the particular question from the audience or from the public, but there are a number of similar questions grouped that into one question. And then prioritize those ones that you've already received. So that way you make sure that you're asking your candidates very pertinent questions that have been submitted from the public. Actually, that's the plan. Received, you may get, let's say your first 50 questions are about, well, how do we improve the playground? And your last 20 might be something that you feel may be very important.
Yeah, that's actually what we've been, that's exactly what we've been talking about doing. That's, that's exactly the plan you stated.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anything else about the forums? So Sarah, do you feel like you have enough to? Oh, we can't hear you, Sarah.
Um, while I have all our beautiful faces here, anyone who's available to an interest to serve as moderator, I know probably, I know Nick and Emily are not here, but I'm just going to assume they're going to handle the teacher moderation. And I probably would suggest that that information go out sooner than Sunday because, you know, that's happening that day, so possibly go out today, that'd be great. But if not, I understand. And then anyone who would want me co-moderate with Cindy, with student group, and then anyone who'd want to moderate the parent community. My time that day is limited, I apologize, it's my last class, it's my last summer class in Melbourne, Springfield. And I will be kind of the technical person to kind of get those set up. But I don't think I can, and my husband will be there, but I don't think I can be there for the parents' community forum, like active. So anyone who's interested to, or any individual or individuals who's interested to moderate the parent community forum as well as maybe co-moderate with Cindy for the student forum.
I'm happy to do it, but anyone else who wants to, please step up. I don't want to hog anything. So if there's someone else interested, feel free, but I'm happy to do it.
And you can have, probably one or more than one, yeah, go ahead.
I could co-moderate this student one with Cindy if needed, because I should be in town for that in case you have internet issues or stuff like that, I would be fine with that.
Awesome, that'd be great.
Tina, I kind of would like you to do the parent community one, just because I think like people look at you as the leader of our LSC and kind of the leader of this process. And so I kind of feel like it would be good for people to see you moderating this, but I don't, I don't know.
No, that's, that's fine, thank you, Kate.
You're our fearless leader and I think.
Regarding the teacher forum, I'll follow up with Nick and Emily tonight to see if maybe we can even get the signup sheet out this evening or early tomorrow morning.
Would anyone like to co-moderate with Tina for the parent, I mean, the family community forum? And they maybe don't have to say anything, but just kind of help organize questions, you know, or, you know.
Questions.
Thank you, Kirsten. There was, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find an email from Emily. She did have some questions that the teachers had regarding the teacher forum, so I just want to.
I've got it, do you want me to read it?
Yes, thank you, I couldn't find it.
So.
Let's go through that.
She said, in terms of the staff forum, who will the facilitator be? Will each candidate have their own time slot? How will the forum be structured? How will people sign up to ask questions? What information can teacher reps or working groups share with staff prior to the forum? Names, resumes, questions previously asked, our notes? And will there be a formal feedback form for staff to fill out on each candidate? So I feel like we've asked, we've talked about the first four. So it's the last two, which are really good questions. What information can we share with, well, I guess them saying share with staff, but I think it's also an important thing for us to talk about what we can share with community and parents. Like can their resumes be shared or is it just their names and nothing else? And will there be a formal feedback form for staff to fill out?
Mr. Gray, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we can share anything, right?
No, I think it can be shared publicly, but then, now these are final candidates, correct?
Yes.
It would be their names. Now, if the candidates themselves want to share their information, i.e. their resume or cover letter or if they have like a one-page receipt, they are free to do that, but you as a council cannot. But remember, this is a job hunt and you are the ones that are potentially offering them a job and their information they've shared with you, you as the potential hireer cannot share that publicly. It's a compromise, yeah.
Okay.
And I think as far as, oh, go ahead, Kate. No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask while we were talking about the confidentiality part. My question is, once these two names have been publicly released, that these are our last two candidates, are we allowed to ask people who may know them, what we think of them outside of their references that they've left us? Like if I have no parents that go to the school that they worked at, is it, am I now allowed to ask any questions I want? Because it's public knowledge that they've applied for the position.
Yes, ma'am. You could, you could have done that for any candidate as a reference to it.
No, but I thought we had to talk to their references. I didn't think we could elicit information outside.
You can, you could have spoken to people beyond their submitted reference list, absolutely. If it could, let's say if you were looking at an assistant principal at another school and they did not identify their principal on their reference sheet, you could definitely talk to the principal.
But not until the names have submitted?
Correct.
Right, so like I couldn't have done it on the other candidates, only once their names of the last two or three have been announced.
Finally, yes, the final.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to say I love the idea of having a formal feedback form from, for each forum. So I don't, I mean, we could say, I mean, we could, we could, it would be, it would be a lot of qualitatives either. We could find a way to qualify, like you could say, do you like the candidate, yes or no? I mean, but the idea sounds great.
So with that, with the forum being on the 30th, the last forum being on the 30th, and if we want to do something like that, we will probably, probably be looking at delaying that special meeting that's scheduled for the 31st for a week. Now, I'm not, I'm not sure we want to do that. As much as I love the idea of feedback.
No. No, I feel like the teachers seem to want to, which I think is great, is that they have such a strong bond and relationship. And I think they want to speak as one voice and they want to hash that out, make sure everyone's had their say and then have a unified voice. And so I think the teachers having a feedback form, I think that's up to them because then they're two representatives and I would love to hear what the official teacher feedback is to share with the whole council. But I, and this is going to be their boss too, you know what I mean? It's not, it's important for all of us, but it will be their boss. But I do think for parents and community members, I think we would love to elicit people sending us emails, sending us information. But I think having like a big survey or a vote type of thing could get us into a lot, it could get us into the weeds and cause a lot of trouble. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I just think, we simply, I think we need to offer a contract. If there is a candidate that we are happy with, we need to go ahead and offer that contract because we are, we have been led by community voice and teacher voice. And so I feel good about our candidates and I feel good about our process. Let's see. And also with the teacher forum being on Monday and the way that they've been, the working group has been very organized in getting, getting their group's input and getting it in a format where it's digesting all of their inputs. So with their forum being Monday, I think they'll have time to, Emily and Nick will have time to kind of digest that in preparation for our meeting on Saturday. Next, not this coming Saturday, next Saturday, 31st. Okay, I think that was it. Is there anything else needed regarding the forums? Okay, so Sarah, you and, you and I will connect about getting communications out and the questions forms and everything, okay? The next item on the agenda is the principal report. And so we have a couple items, general updates and then an update on the Moving Forward Together Fund. So Dr. Tenage, I will turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, good evening. And I want to say that on our end, we have been working hard as well. Special thanks to Ms. McNally who has assisted in gathering all of the input that was out there. As I said to Ms. Holder King, what we are looking at is tied to your CIWP. That's the guiding document. The addition that comes with this is these extra funds which are tied to a major initiative that we're going to be able to utilize to energize, we hope, the student and parent community and to enliven and increase the competencies of our teachers and our ESPs. We, so I, I will say this. You don't, you know, because we've been working at a fairly feverish pace and my goal is to submit all of the documents and all of the position openings to our chief officer and his staff on July 29th. So what I sent to Tina, I hope you don't mind me calling you that, you can call me Andy, I sent her an updated principal's report which included categories for where we are looking to spend those monies. So you don't have that document at this moment in time, but you've seen parts of the monies that we've been given. So I don't know if this is helpful, but we have several pots of money. The first pot is $8,389 and that's monies for the out-of-school time funds. And we're proposing that in light with the CIWP, that we put those monies into a $3,000 bucket for teachers for extended day work, a $3,000 bucket for ESPs, and the rest will join up with supplies or equipment. And that's $3,789. Now, I know I'm, this isn't as helpful as I had intended, but that, the look at that then goes to the Moving Forward Together Funds. And the reality behind that is in light of your CIWP and the initiatives that are out there, we are looking to have the greatest impact on individual students and teachers as they, and ESPs, as they impact student learning and student actions and involvement in the school. And feeding the various funds, we've proposed to spend money for conferences and fees to cover the cornerstone program. And there will be other things related to the IB curriculum. And our recommendation that we, we put our hat in the ring for the branching minds and Renaissance learning. We also continue by funding the responsive classroom for those who are new to the school, for those who have not used it before. That's to the tune of $2,000. And then another $1,000 for other things that come up in the area of conferences, fees, and seminars for staff. The biggest pot of money out of the $61,000 and change will go to extended day buckets for teachers so that we can meet the needs of the diverse learners, the English language learners, and the general education teachers. And it's a plan to do targeted instruction for both before school, during school, after school, for those populations that. for those populations that most need interventions. In saying that, um, I, I've had in my own life, great experience in dealing with small groups of kids, particularly, and, and I know a couple of you wrote very interesting documents about the reading program. And I don't want you to think that we're ignoring that. However, we do have a reading program and we do have students that are at risk. But we also have students that come in with perhaps particular developmental delays. Or they need, you know, as I have said in a number of settings, I don't need a fancy program to tell me if a kid has problems with decoding. I just need his teacher or, or her teacher to identify that so that at the earliest possible moment, we get interventions for those kids that make them not a statistic, but a success story in their own lives and in the lives of the school. And so that pot of money, we're proposing to be about $25,000. Again, they'll be put in buckets for targeted instruction for professional development, for curriculum development in support of all the students that go to Tubman. But in particular, those that may be at risk or may need just some extra instruction. We're proposing extended day buckets for the ESPs. And we certainly need support for security, for clerk. But we also want to train, we have a wonderful group of ESPs. I, you know that, I think. I certainly have experienced that in the month, month of June. We want to get these folks professional development so that they can be brought in as people who are teachers. And hopefully a number of them are becoming teachers as we sit here. But certainly bringing them up to speed with all the programs and all the possible interventions. Because they're working with our kids and they're in a perfect position to work with their teachers, with the DL teachers, with the regular classroom teachers, with our counselors, case manager, all of the support staff to make kids successful. So it's an investment. And we're calling that an investment about $8,000. There is a bucket, an additional bucket for substitutes to free people up to go to professional development. And at times, I, I've really successfully done this in the past, free up people so that they can work in small teams in the school and at conferences to plan out success strategies with individual children and with small groups. Because in the end point, we want all of our kids successful. There's some money for field trips that we would advocate for those kids who are, who may not be able to afford them. There's money for, uh, supplies, and we're talking about specialized supplies in the arts, in design, in the fuse lab. And as I have had this discussion with Michelle and with a few others, robotics. I think you have some of the pieces of the robotics initiative, and I think if you flesh that out, you're going to find another avenue that is going to draw great interest in numbers of kids. And I've seen that in other schools. Um, there's a.
Can I ask a question just before?
No, I'm gonna ask you, I'll ask you to hold your question till I finish and then I'm glad to answer whatever you got. There was some monies put aside thoughtfully for tech supply and some for instructional materials that are targeted for diverse learners and for ELs to the tune of about $5,000. And the question on technology is whether we target about $8,000 to get another chrome cart that will, um, support, you know, the targeted instruction. That, that, I am sorry you don't have this in front of you and I will see that you get it as quickly as possible. And then, you know, you can schedule, you know, we can certainly have feedback on that. But the goal is to use these monies to implement your CIWP and to provide a series of activities that provide targeted instruction and support for students there. With one exception, it's tied to the calendar. We, I held a meeting with the teachers who were able to join us. And then three days ago, a couple of teachers who weren't at the meeting showed up at school. One of them was Mr. Only and one was Mr. Loughlin. And I said, men and everyone else, we want to reengage students to be excited about coming back to school. So Mr. Only is working on some curricular activities that will start the last, the week before school starts. And, uh, Mr. Loughlin is working on, um, something that will engage kids with technology. Hopefully, and the thought out there is that a number of other, uh, support staff will come up with some ideas and be willing to, uh, engage students before school starts. Knowing that the kindergarten, pre-K and perhaps some other grades are going to hold gatherings with their students before school starts. I'm going to pause here for a moment to answer questions that you might have up till now. And then talk a little bit about the calendar and the condition of the building. So I'm sorry to have cut you off, but now when you get a little older, you can't always remember.
Okay. Um, I just had two comments. One was a lot of the actual cool and before school time that you're talking about. I just want to be specific, are those programs for students that would happen before or after school? Or is that all PD time that we'd be paying so teachers would get trained?
That's a really good question. The, the major thrust, there's certainly going to be, uh, monies for professional development for teachers. But the, the thought I bring into this is setting up targeted instruction with, for students. You know, you're, you're, what this is doing, what it will do is be a major investment in first preparing and supporting teachers and ESPs in areas that we want to go. Wilson Learning was one of those cornerstone, the IB program. You have a host of initiatives, but then getting to students who are potentially at risk.
Right. So the, one of the concerns that I have, and that would be great if we could do a lot of before or after school instruction. My concern about like the equity piece of it is a lot of kids that may need the most help, maybe kids who have IEPs that take the bus to or from school. And so are we going to be making it that a good segment of the kids that may need the most help would not be eligible for it? Because there's never busing for outside school hours.
That's a really good question. I'm not going to be your principal. But in my head, it's before school, after school, during school. You eke out whatever times that are available within, you know, I've seen first graders and second graders who are having problems with reading. Well, you know, all they needed was a little extra support and another human being to which they can go home and say, boy, Mr. So-and-so really likes me and I like school. And that's what happens.
Okay. So one other question, I, I would really love in an email from you, just what specific monies are being put into reading strategies? And we just, every single time we are here, we hear from parents about how we need to be strengthening our, um, our reading curriculum and supporting all kids across the board and increasing phonics and whether we're talking about Wilson or whatever. I really feel like we as a council need a response to give to those parents about how we are using these money, this money to make sure that we are adequately addressing that, those gaps that we have in our school, school presently. And I think just kids coming back, particularly the kindergartners and the first graders that spent most of the year last year at home, there's going to be huge gaps in learning, especially with reading. And if we don't close the gaps quick, we're going to lose a lot more time. And so I would really love a specific, these are, this is the feedback we've gotten from parents about reading strategies and what we should be investing in. And this is what we are doing this summer and this is the money that we're putting into it. Because I feel like as much as we've been hearing, we, those parents and all the parents at our school deserve that because it keeps coming up as a huge need. And so I just want to make sure that that's being specifically addressed. And we're not saying, like, when you said, we have a reading curriculum, I know we have a reading curriculum, but I know there, there's been a lot of concern that holes in it and, and gaps where we're not doing our best. And so I think that needs to be addressed.
That is a point well taken. I noted that in the three parents who responded after the last meeting. And, you know, I didn't get to write to each of them, but I did get to one or two of them. And I, I think we'll put that on the agenda. I think that's, that's something you certainly want to answer. And you want answered and, you know, we're, we'll proceed with that. But that's all I'm going to say on that now.
I'm, I'm going to chime in and I'm just going to be really direct. And, and you said it, you're not our principal. And I thank you so much for, for stepping in. And I know that you said Ms. McNally and, but it seemed like, oh, I handled the teachers that happened to walk in. This is a huge amount of money. This is a huge amount of opportunity. And I'm hearing a lot of payroll things, but sometimes I, what I'm hearing is the same, like, a lot of notes. Everybody who knows Anna and LSC knows I have notes. I'm hearing a lot of payroll. I'm hearing about things after school and exactly what Kate just brought up. A lot of the kids with those diverse learners and things do have busing. I have three of them. I'm hearing robots and I've, I have no idea where robots is coming from. And I feel like we really need, we owe it to the LSC and the LSC owes it to parents and the staff to, to sit down and find out where, I mean, I can't do math that quick, where over $30,000 worth of money is going. And we really need to have a, a discussion about that.
We also allocated quite a bit of leftover money just in the May or June meeting. And monies were already put towards Wilson and professional development, I believe, correct?
And I thought we paid for Cornerstone already because I have my Post-it note saying, who is Cornerstone and why are we paying so much money?
Yeah, there's already monies that are put there. Yeah.
Yeah. Hi there. Yeah. I just wanted to chime in because, um, you know, what, what we've done and what, what we'll continue to do is, you know, ask for input and the surveys that went out. There's, um, the Wilson training, uh, we are definitely interested in and we've signed up for teachers to get trained in that. On, you know, I talked to ODLSS, the team. And, um, we are on a waitlist because it's so, uh, it's such a popular program. Um, hopefully we'll get new teachers in. There's a lot of feedback right now, sorry. But we also, Cornerstone was a huge success and, and what we're, what we're doing is really, as Dr. Tenage mentioned, aligning, we are proposing to our CIWP and, um, the things that we've already had in place. So I knew a lot of money was already allocated for teachers to plan and for teachers to, um, support each other in, in the unit, in the units and of inquiry. And I think that.
Tina, will you mute?
We need to mute.
No, just Tina. Yeah, thanks.
So I think the next level is, um, you know, one of the things that we proposed is having, for example, our bilingual teacher supporting, um, grade level teachers in their units of study to support our English language teachers. So, you know, that could be part of, part of the bucket. Um, a lot of the work that needs to happen with our diverse learner teachers and our gen ed teachers, having them have the time and space to collaborate on units. And that all falls under our CIWP for curriculum. For MTSS, we are definitely interested in, uh, you know, I, you know, having the intervention team explore, it's called branching minds, so that we can have a very structured intervention system that logs, um, kids and where they're at. And teachers need time and space to understand and learn those kinds of systems. And then be able to, once we're ready to roll that system out, um, because all of these things, there are FPs right now in the district. So all of these things are not necessarily like ready to go. But once it is ready to go and we are starting to utilize them, then the teachers need to spend the time and the place to be able to gather, uh, the information and talk about the interventions and what's working and what's not. So. But again, a lot of the, what we're hoping to, um, have the money allocated for is, you know, having the systems for kids, no matter if it's during the day or after school, to have those interventions in place. So ESPs, we're hoping we can have them also be trained so that they can have, uh, time during the school day to do that. Like you're saying, Lori, because kids are not necessarily able to do it after school. So that's where we're at. And, uh, we'll have one more meeting with staff to just kind of, you know, say, you know, this is our thoughts. And if there's anything else, I think the one thing that, uh, I overlooked when I was, you know, we were figuring this out is the family engagement, which is also part of our CIWP, which is embedded throughout. You know, we want to make sure that parents understand like responsive classroom strategies that we're using. We want to make sure that you're understanding, um, how we're supporting kids in different, various, um, you know, uh, capacities. So having that be part of this as well. And I think that would also just go under, um, extended day and inviting, being able to invite parents to those kinds of, um, you know, in services or, uh, meetings. So that's, that's kind of where we were at. And again, just a very short window. So totally appreciate what you guys are saying, but let me know if there's any other questions that you have.
Who are the ESPs that you're talking about spending the money on training?
Oh, uh, they're professionals, like so Mr. Tenage, uh, Mr. Foy, anyone who works with kids and, you know, can, can work with, you know, the students that they're assigned to and, and others as well. Or if there's ever after school opportunities for kids who can stay or, you know, teachers as well, obviously would be able to do that as well. So.
So one question I have is with these buckets that are being created, what's the flexibility within a bucket? So if, if there is a, a large bucket for, let's say, um, the, the help, the individual, the targeted instruction or the targeted help, um, is there the opportunity to come back? Whoever the principal ends up being, come back before this LSC and tell us exactly how those dollars are going to be spent?
Yes.
Okay. Because it sounds like it's, when I hear the buckets, it sounds like there's potential to meet some of the needs that, um, like Lori said, or I think, or Kate, that we keep hearing and hearing, you know, and it doesn't seem like we're concretely addressing them. And even going back further, looking at our, uh, past data, we've had this achievement gap that's been there for years and it just never gets addressed. We talk about how great the other numbers are and that. We talk about how great the other numbers are, and that kind of gets kind of passed over as anomaly. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that the way this, because LSC does not get to vote on, on it right now. So I want to put that out there. And secondly, I want to put out there, the information I did receive from Dr. Tinnage today, it was this afternoon. So as I told him, I haven't even had time to digest it. So I'm sure that once I've digested it and sent it out to the rest of the council as well, and they've had a chance to digest it, that there may be more questions. And we are short on time, but since we don't have to vote on it, you know, we can provide that feedback at any time. But yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of buckets and just wondering how flexible that is to actually meeting the needs that have been voiced over and over again. And where's the accountability that the needs are being met?
I'm hearing a lot of payroll buckets. And then it just makes me concerned that there's not money for actually implementing the programs. So we have a lot of, it sounds like when I'm writing it, it sounds like payroll. It sounds like before and after extended day and some training. But I'm not hearing then, where is the money to, to actually do all of these things? Because training is one thing. We need money for the programs. We need actual concrete money for more field trips, more and more programs for the class. So where is that money going to come from?
And you're asking good questions. The buckets create potential. It's the human beings that are going to do the work. The buckets will provide opportunity for teachers, for ESPs. But also, you can explore the concept of bringing in college tutors, retired teachers who love working with kids and could be that extra little impetus to get kids over their initial humps for success. The buckets create a mechanism for seeing that things get done. And indeed, you know, you can tweak, I, I'll tell you my read on this. This isn't the only pot of money. I think there's going to be more money that comes in. And I would think, and that's me, that as time goes on, if something's not successful, you can push towards another avenue of success. And so you're investing in professional development. You're investing in curriculum development that's targeted for special needs before they are identified special needs. That's the way I look at it. And in the hands of, you know, good teachers, good ESPs, and also, you know, exciting members of the community to come on in and be a part of the process. And I will say one thing, I'm sorry, I threw robotics in there because I know some kids are absolutely excited about that. And some kids are absolutely excited about sports. We've got a new teacher coming on staff who is, could teach dance to kids. And I can tell you from experience, adolescents love nothing better than to learn to dance. And that can happen through PE, and that can happen through some supportive outside programs. I'm looking at this money, and I'm listening to you. But it's creating potential for excitement and success. And I hope you look at it that way.
I hope you see it as we're all on the same team. Like, I know I'm pushing back really hard, but for me, I'm like, all right, now you should dance. But we are a fine arts performing magnet school. So then maybe that focus should be more on, hey, let's put some more money in. We don't have an art teacher. We don't have an art program. I mean, those kind of things seem to make more sense, but also because I've been a parent here for so long, and I've been so invested in what the parents are telling me. So I'm having big concerns about, I, I, can anybody tell me the math? I'm hearing like $35,000, $45,000 of money going out. And it is, I know we can kind of shift, but a lot of times if something is said that that bucket is for this, it's not that simple always to move things, especially from payroll into something else. So I have concerns about not getting full feedback and really taking a look. And we can't depend that there is going to be more money coming. I love that thought, but I've been involved with CPS for way too long, and so have you to not, to have that kind of confidence that we are going to be fully funded and get what we need. So I'd just love more opportunities to get feedback from the LSC and the parents and staff.
Yeah. And, and I, I have to say that robotics was a little bit hard for, triggering for, not that I don't think robotics is great. And I actually think we need to figure out where kids are at and make sure everyone is getting something that they're excited about. But when I was on Friends of Bulldogs, we did all this stuff. We were super excited about the Maker Lab. And my kids never saw anything really come of that. And that was a huge disappointment for me. So I really think it's important that before we approve money for any new programs, that it's very clear what the expectations are, how they're going to be implemented, and then what they're going to be measured by. Because that $25,000 that was donated, was it the Makers Lab? Or was it like the, I don't know, whatever it was, I was super excited about that room and what possibilities there would be. And I never saw anything come of it. And so I don't want another, we're spending $10,000 on a robotics program that will then again turn into something that never really comes to what we hope it to be. And so that's why I think all of us are excited about this money. But we feel like it's our job to make sure that we have clear expectations of where that money will go. So a year from now, all of us say, wow, this and this and this, this program the teachers got trained on was awesome. And we saw the results of that this year, because otherwise it's just money that seems to, you know, all go away. And I, I want to be, I want us to make sure we're all accountable for where this money goes.
Yeah, it would be nice to have it as flexible as possible. So the most flexible buckets you can get away with by we're expecting a new principal, it would be great to have the monies put there. And I know there's some parameters on, in order to receive this money, you have to, I follow the CIWP. But you know how you can get really creative? And if the creativity could go in the most flexible buckets, so we're not totally honed in, and then let this new administration come in and really make decisions on where to spend it.
I hear you, but I do have to tell you, this budget has to be approved by the chief, who is, the first test that we're going to pass is that it's in line with your CIWP. And it's in line with the thrust of dealing with those kids who are at risk, which is a concern to me always. I haven't heard you talk about academic excellence, quite frankly. And, you know, in the places I ran, did, did hold my feet to the fire on that particular issue, except my teachers held high, the highest possible standards in those regards. So, you know, bring up these questions. These are, you know, and I'm not going to be around that much longer. However, I'm easily found. Just don't send it to AJ Tinnage one. There's no one after one.
I have a question for Ms. McNally. Ms. McNally, once these funds are approved, is this, is there opportunities, if needed, that are down the line for revisions or amendments, I should say?
Yeah, I mean, the bucket is open with a certain program. And, you know, can easily move it. So we just, we're, we're creating, you know, spaces for monies to be there. And then if we move them and we need to drop some money from extended day to it, you know, I think it's the program and account number. But yeah, they can certainly, we can certainly shift the money once, once those lines are open.
Sarah, once, once you get a feel for what's being used, what's being done and the like, you know, about three months into it, one can certainly, at least they have, we've been able to in the past, shift some monies out of a particular bucket into another area, as long as you maintain, at least this was in the past, the thrust of meeting the needs of the students in your school and the teachers and the community at large. So, and I'll repeat, I think that there's going to be more money coming in. There's always more money coming in. And there is also the ability to write grants. And I'll tell you, there's nothing quite as powerful as having skin in the game. Meaning having some parent money that can be used to catapult into the heart of certain grants. So, you know, I would encourage you along that line. I know some of you are good writers. Mrs. McNally is quite a good writer, to tell you the truth. There's going to be other options there. That's my take.
So you spoke with teachers when deciding, like, when coming up with this budget? Were they aware of the parents, like, funding the Lucy Cawkins program? Because if we, if we could get it, it would probably be good to start at the beginning of the year. I mean, could, how much, how much does that cost? And like, how much training would be involved, like, starting a new program like that?
For Cawkins, we have Cawkins units of study.
For, for, I thought we didn't have it for everyone or something. That's what people keep asking for, isn't it?
Are you talking about Wilson?
Is it Wilson? Maybe Wilson. Whatever it is that, sorry, Laura.
Yeah, it's, it's Wilson.
So.
I think, I think that's the phonics portion of.
The phonics portions?
Oh, okay.
Is it extensive or like?
We purchased the, the.
We did purchase?
Yeah, we did. And so then there, you know, and that's what the teachers are asking for. The PPLC, you know, said, that's great to have this kit or this, you know, this program, but we need training. So that's where some of the day comes, because, you know, it, you, you, they need, they need the professional development, or they need time to like, work together to work through that. Does that make sense? So yeah, we, we did purchase the Lucy Cawkins Phonics Program. We also purchased Wilson Foundations. And again, teachers are asking for, in the survey that we've gotten from them, their feedback, that they want some time either to just, you know, work together through it, or if there's PD for it, allocate money for that. And so that's why those lines are there. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay. I think that we would all feel better than, if that is what's happening, then it's kind of says crystal clear that this amount of money is allocated for improving our literacy program, being filing along what the teachers want, what the parents have been asking for. So yes, Lucy admits that she's not the greatest, so now we spent more money to get her phonics. Great. So that's done. And there's a little bit of Wilson. I'd like to thank one of our, our parents, Laura Franz, who has sent me so much information, and I did watch it all and read it all. So then I would feel better if we said, hey, we know along our CIWP for student improvement, we need this. We also know that we have a strong, we need to improve whatever it is, our arts. If it was a little bit more specific, because right now, the only things that seem specific are not really specific. So it's like, oh, this is all going to payroll. And then this. But I would like to see more of it and have that opportunity to really, and even though that you say more money is coming, great, but I don't want to waste this money while I'm waiting for more money. I want to really kick butt with this money and then kick even more butt with more money.
Dr. Tinnage, how detailed was the information that you sent over this afternoon? Is it just, is it a, a breakdown of exactly what you, or how, how detailed is it?
Exactly. It is, you know, it, it lists monies and categories. And certainly, it's fleshed out more in the document that Michelle put together. This was just an attempt to let you, for tonight's meeting, see where the allocation was headed. It's not written in stone yet. It's not even, you know, it will be on the 29th of July, because that's when it's going to the chief. However, you know, I have no problems, one, with this information going out. And I'll, you know, it, it's contained in what I proposed as a modified agenda for tonight. So Tina has it, Emily and Nick and Marilyn have it. And I didn't send it to everybody because that's kind of exceeding my authority at this point in time. But I do want that information in your hand, and it's subject to some tweaking. We, you know, at this moment in time, for the next six days, there's, there's some, in my mind, some room for some maneuver as more information becomes available. And I'll, let me just go to the part of this agenda on calendar and such. Is that okay?
Hold on, uh, hold on, one more thing, Dr. Tinnage. You mentioned that Ms. McNally has a, a little more detailed information. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Michelle?
Uh, in, in what, so in what regard? Are you talking about the?
In comparison to what, uh, what he, what he sent out.
I'm not sure. I think this is what, and if this didn't come to everyone, I can just drop this in the chat.
I don't know, is it, it feels weird that it's in your power to send it to four people on the LSC, but not the entire LSC? That just sounds really like odd. Am I injecting that?
I don't mean to, I don't mean to.
I don't, I don't recommend dropping it in the chat right now, because it's obviously in flux. And we're having a lot of discussion around it just tonight, because, you know, we haven't seen it. You know, and it's hard to discuss, and it's hard to feel confident in, in something that you haven't really had the time to digest.
Sure.
And so in the interest of time, understanding that these decisions have to be made pretty directly, that's why I was asking if you, Ms. McNally, have any more detailed information. So I think what we would need is more detailed information, like Lori spoke to, as far as, okay, these monies are going to, or can go towards these concerns, these things like the Cawkins. Now, what I've been hearing, and I may be misunderstanding it for sure, because I'm not an educator. But what I've been hearing is that Cawkins has holes in its phonics, and that there are certain programs that would not only benefit those readers who struggle, like some of our dyslexic students, but will also be beneficial to all students. And so that has bubbled up at several meetings. And I, I think that may be the Wilson program, but I'm not 100% sure. And so if we can get that kind of level of clarity around the buckets, what they can be used for, and actually who, who was involved in the input, I mean, it sounds like maybe not a lot of teachers were able to make the meeting for whatever reason. So just, and also, I think maybe it was Cindy who raised the point of putting it, our CIWP has some of everything, and it's a great CIWP. And so I think, as Cindy mentioned, if we put it in the most flexible places possible, and we can still have the flexibility we need. And once our new administrator gets here, and there's time to assess, and our teachers are in the buildings and available to, to, for everyone to give feedback, then we can drill down to how to spend that money. I mean, I think we need to categorize it however we need to, to meet the deadline, so we don't lose it for sure. But I think we need to provide flexibility and accountability that we are addressing our community's needs, our teachers' needs, and to set ourselves up for success and set the next administrator up for success. So if that, I, I don't want to share information that's, um, as far as numbers, that's not. as far as numbers, that's not set in stone, that doesn't have clarity around it. So let's, let's get that. And I don't know if that means tweaking what you sent out, Dr. Tenage, or Michelle, if you have that. But I think if that can go to the entire council, we'll have time to look at it because there's nowhere we're going to get to it before this meeting. So if we can get that and have time to look at it, and then we can have, I think, probably a more targeted conversation about how the money is going to be allocated, as well as provide our community with more specific targeted information, because the interest is rightly out there. And we need to let them know what's going on.
Thanks. Yeah.
One last thing. I think one of the things that also has been happening is we've been so focused on principal selection that like things have not been happening in the order that we usually get in principal reports and those kinds. And school hasn't been in session. What I, I feel like I'm hearing from Michelle right now is that it's possible that buying the Lucy Cockens phonics edition plus getting the Wilson program purchased may have been done with money that was allocated prior. And that now we're going to be using some of the money now to do the additional professional development to add on to that, which is fantastic. But we haven't really had a meeting when that was like fleshed out and said, we haven't really been able to communicate that with parents and feel like we've done our job with all of those people who've raised those concerns. So if, if at the top of the budget, you could say, we don't need to buy Cockens here, we don't need to buy Wilson here, it's already purchased, that was already past money that are gone and paid for, this is how we're going to augment it with the new money? It would just help because I think all of us, the old budget and what made it in versus the new budget and the, the, the transition of, of money, all of that gets a little confusing, what is done and checked off and what still is left to be worked on. I just think a little tidbit about the reading portion of it specifically, so we have answers at that next meeting would be awesome.
I just want to add, I think that's a great point that you bring up, Kate. I mean, to me, this budget is a way for us to be able to dig deeper around and, and connect the dots and be able to leverage where we're at and where we need to go, as well as providing additional supports, especially for we know students who will need it after coming out of, you know, real-time education, given what we experienced in COVID. I also just wanted to just put out here, I think this LSC has been incredible in terms of how we led with integrity and a level of transparency. And just to be mindful of, you know, what Tina mentioned in terms of, you know, we want to be responsive and cognizant of, of who we serve at the end of the day. And, you know, information that's shared really should be, you know, shared with all. We're going to share with four or more. And also, if Mac was here, he might have said, we want to be cognizant of Oma as well.
Thank you, Sarah. And, and thanks, everyone, for this discussion. I mean, it was robust and, and that's what was needed. So thank you. And thank you, Dr. Tenage, for providing the information you did. And I think we have a path forward as far as getting more clarity around these funds. So we'll look for that in the next days, as well as any additional information that flushes out. Do you want to go to the general update?
Oh, let me just add on, on calendar. As many of you may have seen, the system is making it very clear that it intends to open on full speed on August 30th. Teacher meetings are going to take place, staff meetings as well, the week before. We are, we have a really good construction manager and he is willing to work with us to make sure that, you know, we can have some targeted movements into the building. So for instance, you know, the kindergartners are going to come in, I believe it's the 13th or 14th of August. And we have it in a place where, you know, they can come in, see their classroom. There'll be a row, a restroom available for them. He promised a porta potty and I said, no way are we going to do that. So we're moving forward on that. I have, I'm looking to the staff and to the ESPs to come up with some possibilities of activities that will energize kids for wanting to come back. And whether it's sports or dance or art or music or you name it. But I'll look to them to come up with some ideas in that regard. And that's what one of the buckets will use in terms of the out-of-school time funding. I, that gives you a general idea. More specifics hopefully will come. And I have just one other concern. I believe you don't have a quorum unless you, you need seven people is my understanding. Mr. Gray, is that right?
We only have 10 on the council now.
So with a 10-member council, simple party is going to be six.
Yeah, okay.
You need seven present. We have seven present, correct?
No.
We do not?
No, we have six, we have six.
Then you do not have a quorum and you cannot entertain motions.
But with only 10 members serving, I thought a quorum would be six.
No, always seven. It's a majority of the maximum allowable membership, which is 12 in elementary school, 13 at a high school.
Maximum of allowable membership?
Someone could get on the phone to Mac and, or to Nick and say, get on this call. If you have.
Okay, but the allowable membership language is definitely different than what's in the guidance.
No, ma'am. The quorum is the majority of the maximum membership of the body, which is 12 in an elementary, 13 at a high school. That is not a flexible number. The majority in order to pass a motion and a vote would be the majority of the members that are on the council, not the maximum allowable membership. If you have 10 members in order to pass a motion, you need six, yes, votes. Symbol is always seven. Oh, for the take, to take action, I'm sorry. It's always seven. And that is not, that is not.
Okay. So if I, if I heard you correctly, then seven to proceed with a motion, six for a motion to carry.
Yes. On any item. Did you, did you guys see prior to me logging on to the meeting?
I'm sorry?
Did the council take any motions and votes prior to me logging on to the meeting?
Um, the approval of the agenda.
Okay, the secretary identified when they had the roll call with six members that they were below quorum and the meeting would be discussion only.
Yeah, you know, I will take responsibility for that because I thought that a quorum was majority of members serving and so that's what I thought a quorum was for us since we only had, have 10 members.
No, ma'am.
At the beginning of the meeting, Nick, Mr. Hall was present and then he faded out. So I think your, your beginning things were certainly in harmony with the law.
Uh, with the gentleman or young lady faded out from the meeting itself, then at that point, the council would have been below quorum. And then the secretary would identify, we are below quorum at 6:28 or whatever the time may have been. And from that point going forward, no motions could be undertaken.
Okay. If we can get someone on the phone again, so we're back at seven, can we make, can we move forward with the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
So is it Nick, Mac and Emily? We need someone on the phone.
I'm trying Nick now, so if someone else can.
I don't know.
Mac is unavailable. Sorry to talk, but I just called Mac. He's at a professional event. He can't get on.
Well, thank you, Patty.
Hey Patty.
Sorry.
What about Emily? Does anyone have her?
I don't have her contact number, uh, information.
I can text her. Let me text her real quick.
Oh.
It's okay.
Nick did let me know that we do not have anyone signed up for public participation at this point. I should say at the beginning of the meeting.
Can I ask a question? I probably, okay, so here's my question. If, I feel like it's very, we could very easily, if we went into, we really need to get the principal voted on tonight. We are going to completely mess up the entire process if we don't get that vote done tonight. And we've got input from every single member that is not here tonight. So this is not us trying to act out of if we get someone on the phone for a short period just for the vote in the, in the, in the, what's it called? In the closed session, will that count or will it not count because the closed session came out of this meeting?
Well, you, you cannot vote in a closed session. They would have to vote in the public arena.
Oh, there. Okay. So could we go into closed session, have our discussion and get someone on the phone for the vote when we get back into this meeting after closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I wasn't able to get in touch with Nick, so he is going to try to join. But what we can do is go ahead and go into closed session. And then I'll, I'll reach back out to him and let him know that what we'll need for him to do is to chime in when we come back into open.
Well, really.
We can't go on the close though, can we? Because we have to vote to go on the close, right?
Now we can't go into closed session until we get.
Right. So he's going, he said he's going to try to call in in a, in a couple of minutes. So.
Okay.
We have a few minutes.
We need him on the phone to say he votes to go into closed session and then he can go away and be on vacation until whenever we're done with closed section and can vote for us to move forward with people, right?
Technically, yes.
Who's the fourth person? Emily, name it.
Marilyn.
Marilyn. Is Marilyn completely not available?
Yeah, she's having internet conditions where she's at. And then I, yeah, I haven't heard from Emily either. So I think it's, we're just waiting on Nick.
Can people call and not have their face? So the internet's an issue. Can Marilyn just call?
If you have, if you have a dial-in number assigned to your meet, yes, they can do that.
That might also help with Nick too.
Yeah, that's what he's going to try to do.
Dial-in number, correct?
Yeah, I have a dial-in number. I can give them if they're available.
Where is it?
Emily just said she contracted you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure thing.
While you're waiting, can you hear me? Why don't we, I'm just, I'm listening to you and my first thought comes to mind that why don't we get a reading specialist to come in and give them 15 to 30 minutes to speak to the council and ask, answer any questions you have? You know, 15, 18 years ago, there was a guy brought on by the name of Tim Shanahan, who was a reading guru and he really did impact the system. There are people like that out there and you have, as you're going, if I'm hearing you right, you're struggling with the questions that individuals have about your reading program. Well, let's get someone to address you that number one knows reading and number two knows, you know, and can guide the entire school community on moving forward.
That's a great point. Thank you, Dr. Tenage. I see, um, Ms. Emily, have you joined us?
Yep, she's here.
She's here.
Yes, hi. I'm going to stay with my camera off for the moment, if that's okay.
That's absolutely fine. Thank you so much, Emily. Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I've got Nick. Hold on. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Emily, for taking time away from your vacation to save the day.
It's okay. I'm sorry. I'm at a lake house with a whole crew. I'm upstairs, but if you can hear noise, that's what it is.
You sound amazing. Thank you.
Can we move into closed session now that Emily's here?
Yeah, hang on. I'm trying to deal with Nick.
Can you keep him on standby?
Right. Now, so I'm like, wait, don't, don't, don't go anywhere yet. Okay. All right. So the next item on the agenda is public participation. We did not have anyone sign up. So we will move to the next item, which is closed session. And we do have forum, our quorum record with Emily joining at approximately 7:48. Is there a motion?
Hi, motion.
We all motion.
I second the motion to go to closed session.
Okay. It's been motion and seconded that we go into closed session. Is there any discussion? So everyone in favor, please vote with the exception of Emily, if you could vote.
You did it.
Oh, did she? Oh, okay.
Also, I'm under my email, so I'm not sure why it's under my husband's name, but it's his laptop. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you. All right. It is unanimous that we move into closed. All right, it is unanimous that we move into closed session now. Another conundrum with Emily, with you on the call, can you, can you open the closed session, or is your, is your husband a CPS employee?
No, he's not.
Okay.
Let me, let me take a minute here to see. One sec.
Is that why Nick always has to do it? Because he's the CPS employee that?
Right. If we do, he won't be able to join. But if, if, I'm assuming, Emily, you're going to stay for closed session?
Yes, I came to help with the voting process. I'm on my email. I'm going to, I'm going to leave and come back.
Wait, Emily?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We don't have, Emily, hold on, Kate. Emily, we don't have to do any voting in closed session.
Oh, okay. I thought we were voting on the three candidates, widening them down to two.
Well, we will come back to open session to vote, to vote what we decide in session. We come to a consensus to in closed session. But now, Mr. Gray, if you're still on, though, in closed session, we, in the past, have made a motion though to go back into open session. So we would need quorum for that. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. In order to conclude a closed session, the chair or the officer that's present, once all the business has concluded, you merely close the closed session and come back to the public portion of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
No motions.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, so Emily, we would just need you here back in open session when we vote on what we talk about in closed session.
Okay. Well, since I, I came up, I'll join, since I'm here, I'll just.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So you need to make a link?
So, yes. Do we still need a link to get to the closed session at CPS? Will Emily join by, if we give her the phone, then can she join that way?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we could set up a Google Meet and join, go into that. I can set it up and share with her the phone number.
I thought Emily was already working on it, but I'm not sure.
Yes, I'm going to leave and come back and see if that works. Give me one sec.
Okay.
Even in chaos, I love serving with all of you. Here's a gnome.
Hi.
What's your password, Tippy?
Hi.
Because we only have thirty minutes of watching time, so you need to have Peacock to stream it. I have no idea. I don't remember what it was. Lazlo. Peacock.
Okay.
Hey, Emily, we see you as Emily.
All right, let me create a new meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that works. Thanks for your patience.
Yes, thank you so much. And so we will move into closed session, and Ms. McNally, if you could keep this open for our return, and every council member, please log out of this meeting while we're in closed session.
All right, so I'm logging off. I'll reach out tomorrow or so, just to get any updates that may be needed.
Okay, thank you so much for joining tonight, Mr. Gray. Appreciate it.
Oh, not a problem. Good evening. Bye-bye.
Did everybody make it over? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yes, one, two. Okay, we do have quorum to move forward. And we are back in open session. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the candidate, the candidates we discussed in closed session to move forward to the next step in principal selection.
Sir, second. Okay. It has been motion and seconded that we approve the candidates, or the candidates that we discussed in closed session to the next step in the principal selection. All in favor, please vote. Woo-woo. It is unanimous. Okay, that takes care of item eight. Item nine on the agenda is just our announcement of the first regular meeting, which is planned for September 1st. Probably don't have many in the community on here, but for those who are and those who will watch later, there will be an update with the forum information right at this weekend, with opportunity to sign up for questions. So we hope our community will take advantage of that, because we want to hear from you, and we want our candidates to hear from you. Is there anything else? Okay, I just want to make sure I have this right. So Kate and Cindy are handling the student forum, right? Okay, and Kirsten, you're going to help corral questions for the community forum, right? Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? It is unanimous. And Emily, you get the gold star for the month. You are.
No, thanks again. Sorry, I didn't make it and then was late. Actually, also, I feel like I have a few questions about the forum on Monday, but I will maybe connect with one of you on Sunday when I get back from Michigan, just to make sure we're all set for Monday. Because all these teachers have been emailing asking, and I haven't been as privy to answering questions, so.
Emily, I think we discussed all your questions and with Chief, with, sorry. Gray. And so I'll email you back with the summary and CC Tina, just so she can.
Okay.
Correct.
Appreciate it. I know it's hard with the knick-knack out, so thank you so much for carrying us forward.
Hey, Emily, one thing, though, we're wanting to get the submission of questions out to the staff as soon as possible. So are you okay with moving forward on that piece as, as it is?
Question, like, the teach, the teaching working group had started a doc of questions to ask the candidates. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a form to submit questions, right? Is that right, Sarah? I look like you were going to say something. You want to chime in?
But I guess I would say that the teachers can have a, because it's a closed group, the teachers probably can make their own rules about what their forum looks like, and they don't have to follow the same rules as the student and the community slash parent groups. So I think if they already have their list of questions and they decided how they want to do it, I think they can be on their own. The other questions she had, I think, were like process cards. I don't think there would be a problem with them doing it in their own way.
No, there wouldn't, but I just wanted to get an answer from Emily as far as the submission. There's a form that's been created for submitting questions, and it has, so if you want me to get that out, I can. Or if you guys want to handle your questions internally, that's fine as well. But if, if you wanted to get out, I just needed to know, so I can go ahead and get that sent out through Aspen.
I'm conflicted. I think, sure, why not? And then we can just figure it out and compile them all. I think we'll probably have more questions than we do time. Or, you know, teachers were less involved in the process, but.
Okay, all right. And then, then what, what I'll send out will just be that form. As far as the details for the forum and stuff, you know, we'll leave that to you guys. But as far as what I'll send out, it's just a Google form for teachers to submit questions. It'll just go to teachers and staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Okay, with that, at 8:10, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for having all the flexibility in your knees to get this done, and all the creative getting quorum, so, and, and all the work. You guys are working really hard, so thanks. Have a great night.
You too. Thanks.
And thanks, Ms. McNally. Appreciate you.
Thank you, guys. Same.